No audio yet. Anyway, welcome to the November 1st meeting of the Planning Commission. First order of business is to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under the Constitution, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is giving a warm welcome to Mike Lahoda, who is our newest Planning Commission member. Mike, do you want to just give a little brief, very brief bio of yourself? Introduce yourself.
So, my name is Mike Lahoda. I've been a Radnor Township resident currently for about 25 years, but lived here for 10 years prior to that as well. Most recently, I have served Radnor Township in the Radnor-Haverford Marple Sewer Authority, as well as vacancy chair for the Board of Commissioners. I have two kids that have graduated from Radnor but are now in college, and I work for an electrical distributor in Conshohocken as a sales manager.
Wonderful. Thank you for doing this, Mike. So, I guess our first item on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from October. Does anyone have any comments before we approve those minutes? Have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second?
I second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. First order of business is the Delcora Plan, which we heard, which we reviewed last month. And just to give you a little bit of a background check on this, my memory was that we are sort of very close to being on a deadline for our comment to go back to the authority.
Slightly fast.
Yes, I agree. And I do remember that we had some concerns about, like, if there's a transition from Philadelphia, would that, what would be the ramifications for that cease of use? In other words, we just didn't, we weren't clear how that would be handled, and we were just a little bit worried about that. We're also, you know, looking at the cost issue in terms of how it affects the consumer and the alternative, alternative two, which was the authority's chosen alternative was cheaper, but maybe we can, if we could just, if you could just flush out a little, how you got to that, that'd be great. We also understand that Philadelphia is really pressing its need to reduce the amount of water, wastewater it treats, and so this alternative seems to me, at least, to work in favor of that, bolstering that effort. And it was the lowest-cost alternative. So, with that, that's sort of where we left it, and we, you know, we're not experts in this, and we really appreciate your coming tonight, so that you can just walk us through a little bit, and then we'll be on our way, I think.
Good. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission appreciate hearing us out. I'm going to flip this over, because I always talk better with figures. I mean, it's a map of the county. I don't know exactly how this technology works. Oh, as luck has it, very nice.
Can you, can you please introduce yourself, please?
I'd be happy to. I'm so sorry. There we go. That'll work. Hey, look at that. Thank you to the tech guy. Yes, apologies. My name is Charlie Hurst. I'm an engineer in the state of Pennsylvania, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I am on staff with Delcora. I'm the director of engineering. Been there for five years and working with a large team of people to do what we affectionately call the ESA project, which is taking the eastern, the portion of the county that currently flows into Philadelphia and redirecting it to the facility that we own and operate in Chester. So, just maybe a brief overview of the system, if I, because I guess maybe I nerd out over this because I'm a nerd, but, you know, we're sitting up here in Chester or in Radnor today, right? And so magically, and it truly does seem like magic, this flow gets the whole way from where we're sitting into the southwest plant beside the airport in Philadelphia. And so this happens, as you know, through the RHM interceptor, which is this red line, goes into the Darby Creek Joint Authority Interceptor, comes the whole way down to a pump station here at, right beside Tonicum. Now, what's meaningful about that is this is the first place that Delcora-owned infrastructure picks this up. So, the Darby Creek Joint Authority Interceptor actually goes to this pump station. At this, right outside the door, we pick it up as a Delcora asset. This pump station then turns this flow and pumps it through the screen line into Philadelphia. When it, on your average day, this pump station, Darby Creek Pump Station, and this pump station directly to the west, Muck and Apadie's Pump Station, those two together put roughly 25 million gallons a day into the city of Philadelphia on a dry weather day. When it rains, that volume spikes over 100, and that's what you're referring to. There is a lot of, Philadelphia has its challenges with its wet weather system, particularly because it's a combined sewer system, and so that ratio of 25 to 100 causes, contributes to some of their issues. And so thus, Delcora as an entire system participates in the financial burden of those issues. So that's the impotence for us, turning the flow. The program presented is to redirect the flow from, really, all three of these eastern pump stations, Darby, Muck, and Central Pump Station, and build a tunnel that goes from Darby Creek, eight and a half miles, to the facility that we own and operate here in the city of Chester. So then you'll magically go from Radnor to Darby to Chester, assuming this all goes forward. So, I think the first question was related to kind of a contractual, our ability to leave Philadelphia. So, we have, we are currently under a contract with them and have been for decades, and the most recent contract was intentionally short-term. It was a 15-year contract. It expires in 2028, and the intent is that at the conclusion of that contract, we would be ready to suspend sending wastewater into Philadelphia, and then we would be financially and contractually separated from them. We have, we've discussed this intent with the highest levels within PWD, within Philadelphia Water Department, the new commissioner and his staff, and they are supportive of us redirecting the flow. They are, maybe supportive is the wrong verb. They have, they have asked, they understand why we would do this, and they've said, you know, whatever we can do to help, we're not going to stand in your way. And so that's a significant commitment. They, the same 537 plan that will eventually distribute to all the municipalities for adoption here probably within the next two months, if everything goes well, they will have to also adopt that plan. And so that'll be kind of the most formal support or endorsement we get out of them is the adoption of that plan.
And Radnor Township is not on the hook in terms of that relationship or end of relationship, right? I mean, the authority-
In fact, yeah, Radnor Township has no contractual relationship with, direct relationship with Delcora. It all goes through the conveyance authorities. It goes, that's correct. So there is no direct relationship. Yep. Second question was the costs, I think? Is that in?
Cost to consumer.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think there was the issue of the, the worry was, what's best for the consumer?
Yeah. Right. So, what's significant about the costs that are in the 537 plan, the most expensive alternative is to stay in Philadelphia. And that isn't necessarily the highest cost at this very moment, it's the escalation over time that is the concern. The most important number in the cost analysis that's included in the 537 plan is the $605 million, which is Philadelphia's projection of our, of Delcora's financial burden between now and the end of their planning horizon. As a planning commission, you know that you have to set a date when you're going to stop looking at finances. The trick about the $605 million and the planning horizon is it doesn't stop there. We know that that's really the debt service. They bond their projects similar to all municipalities or entities. They sell bonds, municipal bonds, and so those, every year, they go out to a bond issue, and the $605 million is the total debt service of those bonds up until the end of their planning horizon, which was 2042. There's another $605 million after that, and that's just the bonds we know about. And that's, and again, that's all projections and estimates and et cetera. So, we know that there's, there's a large financial element to stay connected, or a large cost to stay connected to Philadelphia, and it all relates to their long-term control plan and their need to deal with their combined sewer system. And so what's best for the consumer, truly in my heart, I believe, is to, is to control our own destiny and separate from Philadelphia. If it wasn't for that, you know, the element of needing to contribute to their long-term control plan, to their wet weather issues, it would be a different discussion.
And I might have, I might have misspoke in the last meeting, because I know I described on the record that Philadelphia was going to do a boring project to try to get away from that two-pipe reliance on the, on the two-pipe system. Was I, am I right about that, or is that-
Can you explain a little more of the two-pipe system?
Oh, the system that-
Oh, I understand.
The combined-
I've heard many plans from Philadelphia over the years. There is certainly one of the plan, and so the short answer is, I don't know. Right now, they're doing an extensive green infrastructure program that most of you have probably heard about, you know, different types of plantings and green roofs and whatnot, and I believe that that is, that that program is rapidly evolving and gaining a lot of traction and performing. Ultimately, whether they have to go to more traditional, what we call gray infrastructure, tanks, pipes, tunnels, and the like, I don't know. It is, I can say that in large systems like the city of Philadelphia, it is pretty common to end up with some gray infrastructure eventually to deal with the, with the system. It all comes down to how much of the rainwater you're able to capture. So if you're able to store the water when it rains, your percent capture goes up dramatically. The city of DC, Washington DC, is the most recent addition to the cities across the country that have tunnels. They have, the first two phases of their tunnel is in operation, takes their water to the Blue Plains Wastewater Plant down on the eastern side of Potomac End, and they have the, I think, the third phase and fourth phase is under construction right now. They go back to Milwaukee and Detroit and, you know, a lot of large, many of the large metropolitan areas end up relying on some large gray infrastructure. Whether Philadelphia ultimately has to go there, I really don't know. I've heard different stories. Yep. I think I'm clicking off a few of the questions, but I failed to write them down. I apologize. Probably should have. What else can I, can I help explain?
I guess the fact that the option number two, the second option, which is the one you are proposing, was the cheapest. People, I think, were eyes glazing over a little bit about, like, how does that happen? Like, something that's that preferred is cheaper than the other options?
So, it's an interesting story. We didn't start with a tunnel. When we embarked on the ESA program, it started as a pipeline project. It started as alternative one. And as large organizations do with, you know, large programs like this, you embark and in order to vet and convince yourself that you're doing the right thing by everybody, you know, the rate payer, the environment, you know, we brought in a team of uninvolved national experts and did a value engineering study. So the value engineering basically sought to achieve greatest value, right? Both cost benefit, you know, get that ratio as best, as optimal as you can. Through that process, we actually pivoted to alternative two and the tunnel. It was, it was really a belief that tunnels can vary in price pretty dramatically, and there was fortunately, some people that were knowledgeable of the local geology, and they said, you know what, we think you've got, you might have pretty good rock to build a tunnel. And lo and behold, right at the start of COVID, we went out and drilled four holes, or five holes across, one at the plant, and five distributed the whole way out to Darby. And lo and behold, they were right. We have really good rock. It's hard, it's, there's not a lot of fractures in it. It allows us to do what's called a two-pass tunnel, where you send the tunnel boring machine through the rock as fast as it can move, then you come behind it as a second pass and cast in a liner, a concrete liner. And so the ability to do, to implement that approach allows us to have, to land on alternative two being the lowest-cost alternative. The benefit of a tunnel is you can, you can only build them so small, like an 11-foot tunnel is about as small as you can send a tunnel boring machine through. In fact, there's some hope that maybe the successful contractor may even come in with a slightly larger tunnel, because it would result in a greater storage volume. So the benefit of a tunnel is because you can only build it in a certain diameter, the smallest, you know, ability is it gives you storage as well. So not only are we able to take the wet weather flows from Darby and transport them the whole way to Chester in a tunnel, we're able to store water when it rains. And so the offset is that the cost to treat that wastewater at our facility in Chester goes down. We need a, in the spectrum of wastewater infrastructure, a very small upgrade at the wastewater plant in Chester to be able to deal with the flows, because they are dampened, the wet weather is dampened in the tunnel. Yeah, so ironically, the answer to your question is, we didn't start there. We started with pipelines.
Well, that's interesting, because I didn't, you know, I didn't read that. As I read the report, I didn't-
Yeah, I don't know if that history's in there. Maybe it would benefit to add it.
So, in some other examples of the tunnel concept, I noticed that there are some issues sometimes with the tunnel, like, it's not just, it's not completely foolproof or bulletproof, but what are the, like, what are the, what would keep you up at night in terms of the tunnel versus just a pipe?
Yeah, so, gosh, that's a great question, and I think that, you know, the construction of it is, there's some uncertainty, as with any major construction, even if you're building pipelines, there's some uncertainty. You know, we've drilled, we've ended up, obviously, we're drilling a lot more than five holes, right? We are now up to, gosh, when we're done, it'll be on average, every 700 feet, we have a bore hole. At the end of the day, there's still some uncertainty. So, you know, whether you hit a, you know, a particular section of rock that is, you know, a different geology and moves a lot of water into the tunnel, that during the construction process, there's some concern about that. You know, you try to mitigate that as best you can, and, you know, we have provisions in the design to take care of high-capacity fractures and fissures and things like this, which were grouting and whatnot. But in terms of the actual operation of it, I think the biggest, the most dramatic legacy of tunnels is the idea that if you, if you don't fill them correctly, ultimately tunnels fill, right? They're not, we're not designing this for, you know, for us, for every storm in the world, right? So, when tunnels fill, you have to fill them carefully and slowly, and if you don't, it comes pushing out somewhere that you didn't expect it to. And it's, it, the way it comes out is, you know, can either be a small little stream or it can be, you know, something more dramatic. And so there's a lot of, and that's why I'm glad that we're not the first tunnel. You, or even close to the first tunnel, right? We, if we, you know, if this program is successful, you know, constructed, gets approved from all the things that, all the places that needs approved from, then we will, we will benefit from the lessons that other people have gone before us, and it really comes down to how you fill a tunnel. Get the air out, fill it slowly. These are all, you know, keys to making sure you don't have the water rush out in ways you don't want it to.
So, folks, that's, I mean, those are the questions that I thought were, needed a little bit of more fulsome explanation or description. Any, do any other planning commission members have any concerns, comments?
Hey, Matt. Matt, this is David Matt.
Hey, David.
Can I just ask, can I just follow up with a couple of questions?
Sure.
And to the gentleman who's presenting, thank you very much for your explanation.
My pleasure.
I have just like one, a couple of question, follow-up questions. With the alternative to the tunnel proposal that you and/or the authority is recommending, that $295 million figure, is there a contingency in there? Because to me, just listening to you and as well as just kind of reviewing this chart on page 47, I'm just wondering, you know, to me, it seems like there's a lot going on with this type of project. So, you know, you have a delta of 472,000, 472 million versus 560 million, and if one project is viewed as more complex than the other, I'm just wondering, you know, if you have a main cost to complete the tunnel of $300 million, and it's somehow because of the technology, you're, you know, you're doing some, you're going through bedrock, doing the drilling or whatever, you know, I'm actually kind of curious that, what type of contingencies you guys have thought about or what's baked into these numbers?
There is a contingency. There's a large, in that 295, that was, I believe, a 30% complete design estimate. I'm trying to remember exactly where, but embedded in that is, going from memory, I believe either a 30 or, we'll call it a 30% contingency, either 30 or 40, but it's a sizable contingency is embedded in that 295.
Okay.
The, you know, the, Mott MacDonald is the, an AECOM, two national engineering firms who are both involved in the design of this tunnel. Mott is, has been doing tunnels quite a long time. One of the, one of the things that gives me the greatest confidence is metrics that they track on the cost of tunnels per foot based on diameter. And so that you can imagine, you know, nerds putting together charts and graphs, right? And so there's, there's a chart that they kind of keep score of the way tunnels cost across the country and keep it updated with-
Okay.
You know, CCI kinds of information, cost indices and information. So, we fall, this, this price falls on the conservative side of those, of those tracking metrics. And so as we all know from construction, it's full of surprises, and so we're, you know, we're believing the best, hoping the best, but, and, you know, but I believe we are reasonably conservative.
The second question I have is with regards to environmental issues. Does one alternative provide greater risk from environmental impact than others?
As a matter of risk management, there is, it's hard to, I don't know how to not oversell this, so I'm just going to say bluntly. It's hard, it's, we are 100-foot deep in solid bedrock that has not been touched theoretically by the industrialization of Delaware County over the last couple hundred years. And so it's hard to imagine a program that has, that is, is a better way to mitigate the environmental risk, and if, assuming that we're talking about environmental risk as a primarily, as a matter of contamination, possible, you know, brownfields, sites that are things that you don't want to dig up. The first alternative where we started with the pipelines, the number one concern that we had was the environmental-
Got it.
We were going to go through two landfills and a, anyway, it's, and many sites which, wow, now are under all that. And we've been monitoring along the way to see what's down there, and we're not completely finished with the environmental monitoring program, but so far, it's very clean down there.
All right. Thank you. My last question I had, and maybe someone in the, from Radnor could help me out with this question, but I remember reading at one point that either Aqua or someone was going to kind of privatize or buy the water system from, I guess, the municipality of Delaware County. I'm not sure where some of those discussions, whatever happened to those discussions, but I'm just wondering, how does that impact with what you guys are proposing, particularly from this, from either raising the money for the bond offering and/or running this thing? So if Aqua, because I remember reading that Aqua was looking to privatize this, or we, or that Delaware County, excuse me, Delaware County was looking to privatize, and I think Aqua was looking to buy it.
That is correct. That is correct. That sale is, as, you're correct, everything, the, you made mention of the water system. There has been a lot of discussion about a separate transaction, which is Aqua and the Chester Water Authority. That's the clean water side of this business. We are strictly the wastewater side, but there's been, there is an asset purchase agreement between Delcora and Aqua. It is making its way through the PUC and also through the court system, and we make brief mention of it in the 537 plan. If, if that deal was to be completed, then it makes the financing, they have greater, Aqua has greater ability to tap the capital markets than Delcora does. And it also, the way Delcora structured these costs, will be spread out among the Delcora customers, you know, the roughly, there's roughly 200,000 EDUs in the county that we serve, and the cost would be spread among that group. If the Aqua deal is completed, then, then that customer base gets even bigger, which is one of the benefits.
And if I can add to that, I think if I understood Dave's question, so this plan, when approved, also runs with the asset. So, it's, whoever is the owner of the asset, whether it remains Delcora or if it becomes Aqua in the future, this plan, once approved and approved by the DEP, runs with that asset and doesn't go away with any transaction.
Thank you. Roger. And it is, it can be a point of confusion, because there is also, this is a 537 plan, which is a, you know, a planning-level document. It addresses only this, what we call ESA, the tunnel program, and there's a separate 537, which we, myself and a colleague, were presenting to, I think, you all or council about a year ago now, and, and so there, that's a separate 537 process. It can be a little confusing.
So, on that same Aqua note, as this is wastewater, this is the, as it going back to the price for our residents, our consumers, this is not regulated regardless if it's owned by a municipality such as Delcora or, you know, Delcora PWD are running it, or if a private entity such as Aqua is running it. Either way, the cost per gallon, per pound, however you weigh this, is unregulated by-
As, as Delcora, it is not regulated by the PUC.
Right.
And the same with Philadelphia, also not regulated by the PUC. If it becomes Aqua, it absolutely would be, at that point, regulated by the PUC. So Aqua, they are a regulated utility business, and so any, anything they do with respect to rates, they have to go before the PUC for approval.
All right. Even on their wastewater side, though?
Yes, yep.
Okay. And the other question that I had was this option number two, is that, has Aqua had any input as to, out of the, I mean, are they completely removed from this conversation until this, until these things go further, as far as the takeover or what, or the sale might go?
So, as you'd expect from a sale agreement, kind of like when you're selling your house, there's provisions in there that you kind of keep doing things the way you were doing them, and you don't like, you know, do something crazy, like, you know, whatever. And so this asset purchase agreement has the same provision in it. And so in the, it requires us to kind of keep doing business as normal, unless we notify them. This is sort of beyond business as normal. They certainly knew about it when we signed the asset purchase agreement, but in that sense, in order to fulfill that requirement of the APA, we have been keeping them abreast of what we're, what we're up to, the attorneys of planning and then whatnot. And so there's, you know, they don't have approval responsibility, they don't have, you know, any of those kinds of things specifically, but, you know, obviously, if they had concerns, we would listen, but they, because of the APA, we've been keeping them abreast.
All right. Thank you.
Any other commission comment?
I had one technical question. I'm imagining this eight-and-a-half-mile pipe, it's 11 feet minimum in diameter. Where's the tailings go from the coring?
We are presently talking to, I think, eight different possible sites. They actually, based on the nature of the rock, it probably has, I'm optimistic that it has some market value. Whether or not that means that, I doubt that, well, you never know. So, interesting, one of the, as in my, in my consulting life, I worked on some of the sites that included tailings from the New York City Tunnel that brings the water out of the Delaware, into the, out of the Delaware River watershed into New York City. And over time, they were actually, they had made business of selling off these parcels that were full of these tailings, because people would roll in a crusher, crush it, and for the next 20 years, be crushing rock without having to dig a hole in the ground. So, part of what Mott is doing right now is searching out sites, that by the time we did the job, we can hopefully play matchmaker between these sites and contractors, old quarries, things like this. But hopefully not just to fill them in, but to actually crush it. Sometimes it works that way, sometimes it doesn't. It depends on the material, it depends on, you know, whether it meets PennDOT standards, things like this. Sometimes it works that way. Sometimes it doesn't. It depends on the material. It depends on, you know, whether it meets PennDOT standards, things like this.
So I, from my perspective, I think the Planning Commission has done its due diligence. We had the questions we had answered well, very well. Thank you.
My pleasure.
I don't, Steve, I don't know where we, we don't, I mean, the point of this exercise, I think, was for us, if we had questions, to find answers. And we have found answers to them. So I don't think we have to, do we have to make a recommendation?
Yeah, you would need to do a motion to recommend approval of this.
But we, we actually aren't to the approval phase yet. This is the, this one was the 60-day comment period for municipalities. We will take those comments and we will digest them all, you know, the, the written comments that were submitted. And so that, that, that window closed on Friday. But, you know, of course, if you have something, you're going to give me them. We can address them. But, so yeah, I think that we aren't ready for adoption here. Hopefully, optimistically, in another 30 to 45 days, we'll be submitting a 537 plan to you for adoption, provided we're able to get all the other comments addressed.
I think we're talking about two different things. I think we recommend to the commissioners that they can proceed or we recommend that they vote positively. It's not the township approval vote.
Underst, thank you. Yeah, so I guess that, procedurally, Roger, maybe what you're saying is that even at the comment period, this,
Yeah, this, this plan will not come back before them. It'll be in front of the commissioners for their approval. So if this board so chooses, I think what you could do is, is like you typically do, make a motion recommending approval of the plan if you have no further comments. If you have further comments, we can memorialize those comments and, and get them to the Delcora folks for, for them addressing. So they're, they're your two options I see right here.
Okay, so I'm, I'll see to the, to the other planning commissioners, but my recommendation would be that we, do, we make a motion to approve this, this alternative. It sounds good, I mean, it sounds good to me, and it sounds like it's going to sync with Philadelphia's issues well. So does anyone want to make a motion along those lines?
I'll make a motion that we recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve Delcora's alternative number two.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. This was wonderful. It was really great. We really needed it and you did a great job. Thanks.
Thank you for the time. Have a good night.
Second agenda item is, oh, I'm sorry. Is there any public comment? No, I see no public comment. So we'll move on to Christie, 238 Aberdeen Terrace. And if you could just give us a little bit of, a teeny bit of historical background.
Yes, absolutely. I will pull up, Ian, if I mess it up, tell me. I'm going to pull up a presentation. I'm going to give it a shot on here. Let's try. Did I do it right? Okay. Hopefully everyone will be able to see it here and at home. I'm Christie Flynn. I want to differ. I'm 236 North Aberdeen Avenue, different than Terrace. We have both of those here. I don't want anyone to be on the wrong street, getting confused or worried. So. I've been before you, before I have a double lot, double wide lot where I am now. We're subdividing to build proposed set of new twin homes. And as part of that, the engineers identified that there are some very minor steep slope on the property. And your ordinance does not have a minimum to trigger a variance. There's literally no minimum. So since I have some steep slopes in the area where we would be building these new homes, I'm here before you to seek your recommendation in front of the zoning hearing board. Would you like me to go back any farther than that or does that sort of lay the groundwork?
No, I just, it seemed to me, there was a denial in this process for you guys, right?
So prior, prior to this application, we had sought a variance to maintain the existing home and add a second single. The lot is 100 feet wide. In order to have a single, we need 105 feet. We don't have that. So we were denied the keep, keep the existing house, add a single application. And so now we are back with the buy right set of twins. So either way, it's two homes, but we're here with the buy right set of twins. That's what we're discussing tonight. Let's see if I can make this so that you can see what I am discussing here. What we're talking about is, I don't know whether, you can see it better on the, the board up here. There are two areas that are hatched here. And these are the steep slope areas. And these were created when the, I'm going to go down to some photos so you can see what we're talking about. So those areas are on this slope here and on this slope here on the photo. They were very clearly created as part of the construction of this house, which was built in 1887. Your ordinance also does not have an exemption for man-made steep slopes unless I can produce a grading permit. Of course, I cannot from 1887. So those are, those are really what we're talking about. It's a very de minimis area. It's 440 square feet. The difference between being a steep slope and not being a steep slope is six inches of, you know, being shorter or taller at the bottom of those slopes. It's an extraordinarily minor request, in my opinion. And what we're, what will happen is the new home has to be set back farther than the existing home because it was, the existing home was built with a more shallow front setback than is permitted under the current ordinance. So the new home will be set back and it will completely eliminate these steep slopes. So there is no risk of erosion because of disturbance of the steep slopes. In fact, it will just take away any of those concerns. And then, of course, in addition, there is no stormwater management on the current property for the structure or the driveway. And we would be adding and controlling all of the stormwater created on the new homes. So all of the listed intents of your steep slope ordinance, this would improve the situation as far as the steep slopes are concerned. And so that, that's our request is, is relief on those steep slope areas.
So, so as you know, the Eastern College Concordia project came to us and with the same concerns. And I believe we, I believe, I believe this commission approved the steep slope issue, the variance for the steep slope issue, but the zoning hearing board did not. They, they only approved half of Concordia's ask on that. So, but you're describing a much different scenario here than Eastern College, I mean, or not?
I think so. I, I mean, I, I think, I think this is, I would characterize this as de minimis. And what I understand is that the Concordia, the request of Concordia was, go back and see if you can avoid some of these areas. In this case, we would be chopping up, you know, a breadcrumb if you said, try to avoid one area and not the other. This is required in order to comply with the ordinance to sort of reasonably develop this property. Even if this property were developed, you know, if, if there would be an addition on this house, if this house were to remain and they get an addition on it, these steep slopes would need to be disturbed. There's really not a way to use this property without this variance. There's not really a way to avoid these steep slopes. And again, these were created, they are man-made. And I think that even though there's not an exemption, and here's just a couple more pictures that you can see, even if there's not an exemption, you know, it was created to create the sidewalk here for this area here. Even if there's not an exemption, I think there's, there is sort of an understanding that those are not the environmentally sensitive steep slopes that the ordinance was intended to preserve.
Right. I mean, are there water issues in this area?
Well, in gen, there's a stream at the back of the property and very clearly there is flooding in the area. This will improve the current condition because of the new controls. And it will be well above where that flooding happens. This property is elevated relative to the stream.
Roger, do you have any, do you have any take on, your take on this? Do you have any reaction?
I, I agree that it's a de minimis impact on the, on the site. And just, just to give a little more context in the code, if, if they were not able to subdivide this property, these steep slopes would be exempt and they could disturb these steep slopes. But the fact that they can subdivide this property makes them, under the code, go, go for the zoning variance.
Any other concerns, comments from the Planning Commission?
So part of the property is in the floodplain. Is that correct? It backs up to the creek?
The very back corner has a.
And then you say that you're going to add, you're going to add stormwater, but, but where there is none now.
Correct.
But it appears as though there's a manhole in the back. That's not a, that's not a retention tank?
There's a septic tank. It's a septic tank.
Oh, it's not on public sewer?
It is not. No. That would also be happening as part of this project. It's currently serviced by a septic tank.
Okay. Thank you.
So is there any other comment from the Planning Commission?
Isn't, wasn't there some issue related to the driveways being adjacent to each other?
There, we, I'll be back before you with the subdivision land development plan. This is, I'm here before you tonight to discuss the steep slopes because I'm on the zoning hearing board agenda for the 15th. So I need that before I can be back before you with subdivision. That is a waiver request that the Board of Supervisors would need to consider. That could be switched. There's nothing that would prevent that from being switched. But it's our contention and we have an exhibit to submit that would show that it's, the neighbors would prefer it because it preserves an additional parking space by keeping them together, which is a hot topic.
Yeah. So the plan isn't a buy right, the plan you're showing is not a buy right plan then because of the.
Has one waiver request.
Waiver, the request.
The use is a buy right use.
Yes.
I could clarify that way.
Okay.
That's right.
All right.
But even switching the driveways does not change the need for the relief from the zoning hearing board on the steep slopes.
Okay.
That does not change anything.
I don't have a steep slope concern.
Okay. We'll be back before you for those other items.
All right. Thank you.
Of course.
Does anyone want to make a, a motion to approve the, I thought I, is there any public comment? No, I don't see any public. So does someone want to make a motion to approve this variance request?
Mr. Chairman, a lot of times you remain neutral or, or neutral or neutral with conditions or oppose or support. Those are your options.
So support would be the option I would recommend.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm moved that we support the, I guess it's a request for a variance from the steep slope.
Correct.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Up next is 908 Conestoga Road. How are you?
Oh, I'm, I'm fine.
And your name?
Oh, yeah, I was just about to get, hi, I'm Bob Newton. I work for Carrington Associates. I'm representing Sesto Pizza in a project. What these folks are proposing is the installation of a refrigerator to the rear of their property. Their property is located on Conestoga Drive and, Conestoga Road, excuse me. And it's a small lot. It's 18 feet wide, 120 feet deep or so, about .06 acres. And so what they need are supports for various variances that we will be seeking from the zoning hearing board. The refrigerator itself will be somewhere around 20 feet deep and 12 feet wide. And about 10 to 12 feet high. Be right back on along the rear, rear and side property lines. It will be right on the property lines. So that will be some of the relief we are seeking. So let me go through the, we received a review from your engineer concerning the project. There, there are four comments that he had concerning the variances. And I'll just repeat them so I can get your input, positive or negative. Just please provide it. Okay, comment number one is distance from side lot lines for detached structures without parking access.
I'm very sorry to interrupt again, but I think what you're asking is for the board to give an opinion on your request for variances for those items. I think, as you saw from the last one, they usually do that when an application to the zoning hearing board's been filed. I think you filed a sketch plan.
That is correct.
Application. So I think it would be appropriate for you to tell them what you plan to do with regard to the zoning issues that Mr. Phillips raised in his letter. For example, we plan on filing a zoning hearing board application for this, 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 and this. Here's how we plan on handling that. And then review the plan in that fashion. Am I missing something, Mr. Chairman?
No, I mean, what I heard was they're, they're, they're seeking this, the variance for refrigeration unit that is part of their business.
That is correct.
Like you need a refrigeration unit to run your business.
Yeah. I would think that's a legitimate accessory use.
Yeah, so, so my feeling is that the zoning variances, it, that's really not what we're here to. We're, we're not, you know, we will, here, this isn't a land development plan. This is a, you're asking for relief for a refrigeration unit that you need to run your business. So it's all, to me, that's just running your business. That's where, that's where I'm sort of lost.
Yeah, and I think, I think where we're a little bit confused here is this is a sketch plan application. Normally, when the Planning Commission reviews a sketch plan application, what it does is it, it looks at the plan and points out things that would pop out to it. And, and Roger helps by doing the review. So Roger would point out zoning issues and the Planning Commission would say, oh, you're going to need zoning hearing board relief. You're going to need zoning hearing board relief. Then when you file the zoning hearing board applications, and they've had a chance to look at the application and review the application in, like, as a real document, then they'll make a recommendation to the zoning hearing board as to whether or not they think relief should be granted or whether relief should be granted with conditions or whether relief shouldn't be granted. But this isn't the meeting where the Planning Commission's going to give you a recommendation on your zoning hearing board application that you haven't filed yet.
Understood.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll rephrase how my presentation.
Can, can you pull the microphone down a little bit so the folks at home can hear you? There you go.
Is that better? Okay. All right. So this is our intent. We, we got a review from your engineer and he has four zoning comments in there. I'm going to go over each one and if you have any thoughts, I'd appreciate. I'm gonna go over each one, and if you have any thoughts, I'd appreciate what you might, might have to say. Okay, so the first one is the distance from side lot lines for detached structures without parking access shall be five feet. The proposed location of the refrigerator would be directly on the rear and side, side lot lines. Okay? So obviously, we, we would need some type of relief from that, okay? The second comment, distance from rear lot lines for primary and accessory structures adjacent to residential zoned areas shall be 15 feet. Behind our property is zones residential, but it's actually a parking lot, some type of commercial parking lot. The other areas adjacent to our property is zones residential, but there's nothing on them at this juncture. So you have to go one or two lots over to actually, before there is a actual residential dwelling, okay? Probably the biggest one from our perspective is comment number three, permitted accessory uses and structures do not permit a refrigeration unit. Okay, so by right, it's, a refrigeration unit isn't allowed, however, it is fundamental to their business operation. And then the fourth comment from your engineer, maximum height of any accessory structure shall not be greater than 20 feet. I, this structure will be 10 to 12 feet in height. So that was a comment there. I don't think that will require any type of zoning when this is all settled out, when you fill out the applications and ultimately submit them to your zoning hearing board. Do you have any questions for me at this juncture?
Yeah, I just feel like, I feel like, I appreciate everything you're saying, and I just feel like it's, this is out of sync for the planning commission. Like, this, this meeting is, it's, it's extraordinary, extraordinarily unusual for a sketch, for you to bring a sketch plan to us when we know, we all know here, you have to go to the zoning hearing board.
Understood.
So, am I, am I misstating that or?
No, there's a value to filing a sketch plan before you go to the zoning hearing board because now he has the benefit of Roger's thoughts on what relief he needs so that he doesn't come back with a land development plan, only to have Roger say, oh, you forgot this variance.
Right, but Mary, all I'm trying to get at is what, how can we serve this applicant? How does the planning commission serve this applicant right now? What, what is the best thing we can do?
Under, under a sketch plan, all you're required to do is provide comments. There's no official motion, there's no action taken by the board other than providing feedback and providing comments to the applicant. So, you know...
Okay, so my feedback, my, my feedback that a refrigeration unit is absolutely necessary for you to conduct, to keep your business operating, that's a comment. I would, the zoning hearing board can hear that. That's how I feel.
I have a question about that, though. There's several other restaurants next to it, why you? Why Zesto's Pizza? And there's all these other restaurants that don't have this. Why Zesto Pizza?
Yeah, why don't you answer that?
Hi, my name's Eric Burkhart. I'm one of the owners of Zesto Pizza. In regards to the refrigeration, why we need it is because the limited space in our store currently and how we're growing, we require more space to be able to keep more products on hand and to cut down how many deliveries a week we need to get. I don't, I can't speak for the other restaurants on how many fresh products they're using, but for us with the pizza dough, the, the time it takes for that to ferment and the storage space that that takes up, we would be able to do more with our business if we had more space. Is there anything else I can answer?
How, how big is your existing refrigeration and where is it?
Currently, we have a very small walk-in box in the store and probably like five by seven feet. It is not very big. We actually have two, we have a smaller one, too, that's probably about three feet by five feet. When the business first opened, we, we've grown exponentially since that point, and to accommodate more business, we're, we're at the max that we can do right now with our storage space. So this would allow us to, you know, bring in more supplies.
Are you demolishing the interior space and concentrating everything in the outside space?
Yes, so one of the walk-ins on the inside would, it, it's at the end of its life. So if we can't do this, we will have to build a similarly sized one inside and make different efforts from there. But yes, there, it would allow us to expand our line in the kitchen, bring in some new equipment and become more efficient.
You couldn't make this outside storage unit 15 feet tall and solve your five-foot problem?
As to the height of it?
No, no, because by making it higher, if you need somebody square or cubic feet, a taller refrigerator, you know, it's hard to operate maybe, but...
Yeah, I, I don't know what the logistics for, you know, storage and...
You already have, you're already planning it...
Looking the ladders and things like that.
Yeah, but you're already planning a 10-foot ceiling now.
Right.
Or 12.
The height of it isn't necessarily the ceiling, so the inside will be smaller than what the, the height of the structure is.
Where are the condensers located on the top? Is that the height difference? Is because the condensers are sitting on the top of the unit?
They could either go on the top or the side.
Okay.
The actual structure of the box hasn't been planned yet because we're not sure if we'll be allowed to build it, so...
So this is kind of in lieu of trying to go through a process where you add on to the building and increase the square footage? Because I, I do recognize that you're not the largest unit in the, in the neighborhood there.
Yeah, it's a small space. Also, we don't own the building, so I guess that would be something we'd have to talk to the landlord about. But there's not really, behind our building is the, the basement. It's an outdoor entrance to the basement.
So you don't have like storage down there? That's, that's just dry good storage?
We, yeah, it's all dry goods.
Okay. That's great that your business is booming. That's what you want to see in the neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we've, we've slowly grown and right now, we've gotten to the point where we just, we're too busy. Like, we can't grow anymore without creating a way to still be as efficient as we've been.
That's good.
For the board's benefit, could you talk about what noise is generated from this refrigeration unit?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it, yeah.
I spoke with people about this today, and it's my understanding that they're relatively quiet, that if you're 25 feet away from this structure and the condensers, you would, you might hear a slight hum, but it certainly wouldn't be anything that would mega decibels or anything like that that would impact the adjoining properties.
So in regards to the basement, is, is, is there any possibility of moving this refrigeration box to the basement rather than outdoors?
I wouldn't think so, given the way the basement's laid out. If that is something we need to look into, we can, but the, due to the height of the ceiling and the space of the basement isn't really laid out for something like that. But at that point, we would need somewhere for dry storage, so...
Are your existing compressors outside?
The actual compressors for our walk-in boxes are in the basement currently.
Oh, that's not good. Hot.
So they stay a little cooler in the basement, but yeah, rather than on top of the unit. But it does create some problems.
I would just say that in a, I mean, I don't, without, I mean, I know where this pizza place is, but I don't know the surrounding areas. But it was mentioned that there's two residential lots adjacent to that corner that are not currently, that are not currently being utilized, but they are technically are something.
Lots, zones up.
And so in addition to putting a structure too close to the boundaries, you can't even put an air, you can't put a compressor that close to a property line. So if anybody wanted to ever develop those into houses in the future, they would have to deal with, I mean, he said 25 feet, but I'm picturing that these lots here, 25 feet would be in somebody's, 25 feet away would be in somebody's bedroom if they ever developed this. That this, that these compressors are gonna be really close to whatever that property is.
Do they have to be right on the unit or can they be a certain distance, like up to 100 feet away, that they could be mounted on the roof?
It might be something that can be further away, like how our current one is not on the actual unit.
I think you just have to make your case to zoning. I, I'm neutral on this.
I mean, so is there a hardship here? Are you guys...
You, they haven't filed an application yet, so I would, I would caution you about giving an advanced opinion on a zoning hearing board application that hasn't been filed.
Yeah, that was my point.
My, my opinion, my opinion is that the hardship is the lot itself. It's 18 feet wide, like it's, and 122 feet deep. So no matter as far as offsetting the compressor, as we just discussed about, it'd be very, very difficult. So the lot is very restrictive to what they want to do.
Any other planning commission opinion here? I mean, what, this... The purpose of sketch plan, Mr. Chairman, is for the applicant to get official review letters from staff, which they've gotten from Gannon Fleming, and an informal review from the planning commission. So it doesn't go anywhere beyond here. It doesn't go to the Board of Commissioners. The applicant would then go back and determine his route of what they want to do based on what they've heard from you, what they've heard from staff, and the, the review letters, which give them a map for zoning.
Yeah, I, I think one thing that came out of your discussion that's important is the, the possible noise with the condensers right on the property line and Liz and Mike's suggestion to maybe move those condensers away from the units. If, if you take nothing else from this meeting, that's a really good suggestion.
I know for, just extending that comment, having a little bit more information on what kind of units are available to you would be really helpful to ease the concern of the noise. So if you can do a little research as to what, what these units might look like, have them in your packet, different manufacturers, how far away they can be, where their mounting places can be, that would be super helpful moving forward.
I did see them today, a picture of them, so I asked the owners what they look like, how high, those kind of questions. The noise was a specific question I asked. So we, we certainly can provide that information in the future for the zoning hearing board or if this board sees these plans again. Okay, thank you.
Are the, the two residential lots occupied by commercial properties or what's...
The one certainly is. It's a parking lot.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know who owns it or what, what units it serves. I just know when I drove through there this evening that there were a lot of cars in there and so forth.
A lot of times applicants will contact their neighbors, so it might be worthwhile to investigate who owns those lots and get their temperature, no pun intended.
Does this, does this have foundations? Is it a building?
Well, it will be placed on a concrete pad, six to eight inches, which is six to eight inches of stone we need there.
I think what Steve is asking is, is it really a structure?
No, I want to find out the structure.
Probably looks like one of those William Scotts ones.
You'd have to find out what the building codes are related to sitting on a property line.
I understand.
Pardon?
I understand.
Yeah, and Steve would probably help you with that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other commission comment? Staff comment?
I, I just have one more comment. Just, the applicant might be, might be chip if there's more shown on the plan of the other purposes with, and the other things that go on behind the building. Just adding in the trash removal area, the other items that need space back there because looking at the plan now, the initial thought would be, well, why don't, why don't you pull the refrigeration unit to the commercial property line? But I know there's other things that need to go on behind Zesto's. So I, I think it would be helpful just to have an indication of, of what that is. Would you lose a parking spot back there if you pulled it at least five feet away from the residential property line? Things like that would be helpful to know.
Yes, we will lose a parking spot. I wonder if this is actually constructed.
Well, thank you, Megan, and thank you, PC members. Is there any public comment? Nope. We did. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you very much. And good luck with the zoning hearing board.